All right.
We're here.
First time I've used a gavel, so. All right, welcome everyone. Thank you for our meeting tonight, the six o'clock work session agenda. So, want to thank everyone for being here tonight. So, we'll start with the roll call. Ms. Foster.
Councilmember Greg Nani.
Here.
Councilmember McGowan.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Manten.
Here.
Councilmember Shay.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Boe.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Garitano.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Foster. All right, moving on to section three of the agenda, the Mayor Pro Tempore's comments and announcements. Just a brief announcement to let you know why I'm sitting here. So, obviously, I am the Mayor Pro Tempore for the city, and the charter provides that I will preside over the meeting. The role is selected by the City Council annually from among its members, and I currently have the honor of holding this position. Therefore, as the Mayor Pro Tem, I have the duty and privilege to preside over the City Council meeting this evening. Just a couple of things about this, although I am sitting in the mayor's chair this evening, I am still a council member, and retain the office and duties of a council member, including the right to vote on matters presented for action by the City Council. In addition, it is worth noting that I have no veto power, nor can I break a tie vote of the City Council. So with that, thank you again for the opportunity tonight. We're going to move into section four for information items. We have several for information items here, so I'd like to open it up to see if anyone has any comments or questions regarding these four information items. Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions regarding the update on Route 100 median landscaping. Is the $182,000 currently in a 2018 budget?
Rick?
Yes, the project was budgeted for 2018, and we budgeted $300,000 for the project, so yes, it is.
So, what's the rationale for not moving ahead because plantings take better root in the fall than they do in the spring?
Well, there was much discussion about this project at the Admin Public Works Committee. I think there was frankly some concern with regard to moving forward and spending the money for landscaping at this time. There was discussion about whether we should be spending money for potential safety projects instead of landscaping, and for that reason, I think it's fair to say the support wasn't there to pass it at committee at this time.
Okay, thank you. And then, my next question's not really a question, it's pretty much an announcement for anybody from Ward Five who is checking in on live stream. We are having a Ward Five Citizen Input Meeting on September the 26th from 7:00 to 8:30 at Green Pines Elementary, and we invite you to attend.
Thank you, Councilmember McCutcheon. Is there anyone else that has any items? Councilmember Werther.
I think it'd be important if Mr. Thomas could spend a little time talking through the principle of the budget, 2019 budget considerations. In particular, I've happened to have some discussion with our city marshal regarding the Police Services Agreement and personnel additions and some of those changes. I think, given some of the complexity of it, it might be worthwhile to have that discussion now with some of the council members so they understand before we get to committee with some of that, so if you don't mind, sir.
Sure. With regard to the 2019 budget process, at our last work session, a schedule of meetings was distributed. As part of that schedule, we have a number of planned committee meetings where the three standing committees will review their various components of the budget. We'll also have a work session devoted to reviewing the capital improvement projects as well as the personnel plan. In advance of those meetings, the department heads and myself will be preparing a preliminary budget, which will serve as our starting point for those discussions. Prior to preparing a preliminary budget, again, the department heads and I discuss what some of the items of significance might be for the upcoming budget process, items that are anticipated to require a bit more discussion than the more routine matters might. So, the memorandum that's been provided identifies what some of those major items are, both in terms of the operating budget as well as the capital budget. The operating budget, one of the primary items that we will be discussing is our Police Services Agreement with St. Louis County. We've actually are a bit ahead of schedule with that, with the Board of Public Safety having already had some discussion about potential additions to the Police Services Agreement in terms of adding new personnel, both for supervision at the precinct in Wildwood as well as additional officers necessary to provide a fifth beat 24 hours a day. So that is an item that will be coming to the City Council here as part of that process. We've had some very preliminary discussions among the other department heads about some other positions that we may wish to pursue in a number of different areas, and quite honestly, we have not had a very in-depth discussion on those yet, so we've identified a few areas where we may potentially have some needs to consider for next year. The third item is actually an item that we will also be discussing at tomorrow night's Economic Development Committee meeting. As you know, we have a economic development program that is fairly new to the city. Couple of years ago in 2016, a number of actions occurred. One, we added an economic development element to our master plan. We've established a single standalone economic development standing committee. We've adopted an economic development guide, and we've hired an economic development manager. As a new program and acting very much like a department in itself, the thought here was, in terms of budget, it may make sense to have a separate department budget for economic development so that we can track those expenditures directly as opposed to trying to identify where those may be within the administration budget. Next item, just a general consideration of other special events, and specifically, we've been doing a lot of these pop-up events, so that may be an area that we see some growth. Those have been very popular. Next, we have the Town Center update will be starting in full force at the beginning of 2019, so there may be some resources needed to support that. Also, have been some discussions about enhancing the farmer's market with additional marketing efforts for it, creating perhaps its own new logo and providing types of different types of shirts and other materials that could be sold as part of the farmer's market program. And then, just as far as operating goes, the last item is special projects, a couple of items that have been identified already, and there may be more. One is preparing residential lighting guide, which our Department of Planning will be undertaking, and then, the Historic Preservation Commission has discussed having some additional written history documents prepared. On the capital projects fund side, we have a number of very large projects that are planned to be in construction next year. One very notable project that the city will be managing solely is the Manchester Road Streetscape Project, which should take much of next year. We will also have some coordination with the major 109 projects that we've been discussing recently, along with a number of other roadway, bridge, and parks, trails projects. So, with that item, we will be looking closely at what necessary resources we may need to be able to manage a number of large projects at once. Next, related to that, our Board of Public Safety in its recent meetings has been discussing in more detail the need for various highway safety improvements, and part of that has been an effort which is still ongoing to prioritize different safety improvements. Much of the focus thus far has been on the MODOT routes, but we will also be looking at city roadways and identify public safety improvements that the city may desire to take on as part of our five-year capital improvement plan. Next two items identified, we have recently acquired the six acres to the west of City Hall on Crestview Drive, so doing some master planning work on that to determine what particular uses might be desired on the property in the future. Similarly, we're in the process of acquiring a donated property on Penkin Road for a park as well, so similar efforts on that. And then finally, we have some vehicles and other capital equipment, like our electronic message boards, that may need to be replaced due to age. Again, those are some of the major items that have been identified at this point by the department heads and myself. Certainly, there will be other items I think will come up through the discussion of the budget, and if there are any other items that the council would like us to consider and look at as we're developing the preliminary budget, certainly would like to hear that either tonight or outside of the meeting as well, if you think of items.
Councilmember Werther, do you have anything else?
No other items on that. Mr. Bertolino, I know you're a member of the Board of Public Safety. Can you, or maybe appropriate for Captain Tanner, I know how he loves to come up to the microphone however, perhaps discuss whether some of the specifics of what the Board of Public Safety and the Police Department is looking in terms of enhancements for 2019? I know a good part of this at least seems to be using some of the Prop P funding to do that, but what do you see in terms of the overall improvements as a result?
One of the first things we talked about was 24-hour supervisor staffing. You know, that's been a goal in the city of Wildwood for a long, long time. Right now, to complete that, I would need two more sergeants, and that would ensure 24-hour supervisor coverage seven days a week, and that's by a Wildwood supervisor. You know, what I found out is, when I talk to the residents, when they want to talk to a supervisor, they want to talk to one from Wildwood. You know, it's not that a supervisor from an unincorporated precinct's going to make a wrong decision, it'll just be, we're more in tune with what's going on here. So that's the first recommendation. The second one was to actually staff a fifth beat. If you go back in history, it's been since 2008 since you really had an increase in beat staffing. Back in 2008, we went from a three-beat to a four-beat staffing, and that gives you a lot of different advantages. Number one, it reduces response time. If you look back at 2006, let's say, you probably had a response time just over eight minutes. And now, we're down to about 6.2, and it's after staffing that fourth beat. It also has a lot of different things, it's just more resources for a variety of things, whether it be special events, whether it be traffic enforcement, you know, it really just depends on the incident. So, and this is something that I brought up over a year ago, so this is not a last-minute thing, it's one of the things we were talking about, is I think with the development in the city of Wildwood, you're growing, it's probably best to get ahead of that curve as much as you can.
Thank you, Captain Tanner, appreciate the more detailed explanation.
Thank you. All right, moving on, I have, yeah, I was just about to call you, yeah, Councilmember Shay.
Okay, so I do want to take on a comment that was posed by Councilmember McCutcheon, and then sort of dovetail into the administrators' comments, I think they overlap. One of the discussions that we had at Admin regarding the beautification issue was, we had, we had a lot of residents there in attendance giving a lot of voice to street safety improvements and a lot of requests for those, and really giving it a lot of comparison conversation about what do we spend our money on? And I think it's a valid comparison. I don't always agree with those types of comparisons, but I think when we're talking about public safety and street improvements, as we've seen, there's a lot going on. So, out of that came my motion to ask the Board of Public Safety to provide us with a list of priority street improvements that they've been, you know, discussing or getting concerns brought to them by either council or the community. And I want that to be part of our budget discussions as we move toward the end of the year. So, while I did not necessarily hear that expressed, but that was where that originated from, it was in Admin, it was a motion I made, and it was seconded and unanimously approved. So, we're going to incorporate that priorities list into the way we just start to decide about these projects and how they're going to be funded, and what a perfect time as well, we're talking about the priorities for 2019. Thank you.
I have Councilmember McGowan.
Joe, I've got one or two questions for you. First, regarding the outdoor lighting situation. When we talked about that at Planning and Parks Committee meeting recently, it was my understanding, and I just want to confirm, you're still thinking that it's probably a little bit more important to place priority as you work on that with regard to residential lighting, more so than perhaps at this point worrying about the commercial aspect of it? Is that right?
Yes, sir. As the committee discussed the contract with Randy Burkett Lighting Design, it became clear that just in terms of sheer numbers, there's probably 13,500 residential properties and 500 commercial properties, and those are just generalizations in terms of the numbers, and that in terms of impact, one light that doesn't work on a residential property multiplied by that will far exceed the issues we may have in the commercial areas in the short term. So, we're going to look at residential and trying to put something together that would help a homeowner understand the three components of our outdoor lighting requirements, trespass, nuisance, and the loss of night sky.
Thanks for that. Also, regarding the rural internet matter, I know you and I had had a brief discussion about it, what to do, where to go with it, and so forth. Maybe we're at a crossroads sort of as far as what we need to be doing. Can you just expand on it, and do you anticipate being able to have a Rural Internet Committee meeting between now and the October 8th council meeting where you were talking about wanting to have a discussion of it with the full council?
Mr. McGowan, we can certainly try to schedule something, probably not this week because I think every night this week, the department has a commitment already here, either at City Hall or with our Ward Five Park meeting, but we'll look at next week. Quite frankly, I think the word crossroad, crossroads is a good description of what the department would like to talk to City Council about in closed session.
Okay, and do you think that as you do that, that you would have a benefit by having had a, some type of discussion regarding this with the Rural Internet Committee prior to that, or should it go the other way and have the council discussion first?
It's a very good question and one that I'll probably pose to John Young, our city attorney, tomorrow when we meet at our regular Tuesday session. And it's always nice to have the Rural Internet Access Committee aware of the status of current service advancements as well as problems, and certainly to have a recommendation from them. I think that makes City Council and city staff much more confident that we're headed in the right direction. The circumstances are such that even if it is imperative to have a meeting with the volunteer committee, we could delay the discussion probably till the 22nd of October, which may give us a little more time to kind of arrange that meeting.
Okay, well, it's in your court as far as deciding what you want to do in that regard.
Thank you.
Joe, if I could just make one quick comment, Joe Garitano. Today, I took a little bit of time as I was out running errands and so forth, and I went down and visited the new Wildhorse Creek Road Bridge. It really, for Rick and the folks in the Department of Public Works, really does look nice. It's going to be a major improvement to that area, and I think it'll improve the traffic flow and also improve the appearance of the area as well. So, it looks like it's almost ready to open. Rick, do you have any idea, I don't want to pin you down, but do you have any idea when you think it may open because it looks pretty close?
Yes, thank you for those kind words. It is very close to being wrapped up. We have to stripe the road, put up a few signs for weather permits. We should have it open by the end of the week.
All right, thank you. I have a few folks, councilmembers, here on the list here. Let me just read through, I have Councilmember Greg Nani, Bertolino, Dodwell, and Jordan on the list here. So with that, I will hand it over to Councilmember Greg Nani.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, thank you very much. I wanted to address the issue that you brought up, Ms. McCutcheon, about the plantings and the median. Tammy already sort of said some things about that, but a number of weeks ago at the Public Safety Board, and Mr. Bertolino will confirm that, I had come in with a list of places in the city that I thought were major concerns to us in terms of traffic safety. Mr. Brown had already beat me somewhat to the punch because he had a similar idea in mind, and he asked the Public Safety Board to prioritize a list of roads, which for the moment consists of roads that mostly are a combination of both city roads and MODOT roads, MODOT being one of our big problems in terms of getting some things done. The issue with the Admin Public Works evolved over the complaint that I was given by some of my constituents regarding the fact that they'd been waiting for 10 years for a left-turn lane to get into their subdivision at an intersection which has now become quite dangerous. We've tried to get MODOT to cooperate with this, they won't, at least not to any extent which would resolve the problem in the near future. Mr. Brown has tried his best to communicate with them, I've tried, the people out there have tried, we've even had the state representative try, and we're getting nowhere. Rick did a study, he did a study of the intersection and what it would cost to redo it. His initial study was about $183,000, thus the check that I asked for Mr. Brinkman that night for $183,000, that's where that number came from. I didn't get the check, by the way. But anyway, so, in the meantime, Ms. Yeoman's told Mr. Brown that she wanted to do her own study. They have already proven that they need the left-turn lane with a warrant study that they did, they've already concluded that the left-turn lane is required. But anyway, they now have done their own study, and they've come back and they said it's going to cost them $500,000 to fix the intersection. And they said, well, it could be three years before we get to it. Well, that's three more years on top of 10 years, it has already been a fight for these folks in the process of this, but they said it might proceed faster if Wildwood is willing to pay 50% to 60% of the cost. You know, I have a problem with us paying 50% to 60% of a cost on a road that belongs to the state of Missouri, but be that as it may, the safety issue that's involved here is significant. And if it comes down to killing people versus avoiding plantings, I'll take not killing people any day of the week. So if the plants have to be sacrificed, we can always get plants, you know, we can't get people that easily, so that's where this came from. I did give it an out in a sense that I said, would you talk about it again in January? I understand that springtime maybe is not the best time for plantings, I'm familiar with some plant stuff, and my wife is quite a horticulturist, but I understand all that. But the bottom line is, we needed to free that money up to some extent, just in case we need to use it to do some matching funds to get what we want out of them for now. My suspicion is that if the gas tax passes at the polls, we might be able to squeeze them a little harder for the money, and they won't have so much complaint at MODOT to prevent us from doing this, but that's also a delaying tactic. So, anyway, that's where it's coming from. We have a number of roads that fit into this category, Route T in 100, Pond Road in 100, the intersection of Wildhorse Creek and 109, and on and on and on. And so, and this isn't going to stop, folks, because the traffic here has become greater, we've got more people living in the area now and passing through the area, and we can expect this problem to continue to grow, and we're going to have to meet it because they are safety issues. I just thought you'd like to know. That's a summation of a very long story, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Greg Nani. Next, I have Councilmember Bertolino.
I'm going to summarize, John. And Tammy, thank you for your comments, and as John mentioned, at the Board of Public Safety, thanks to Rick, we did have a list, I think it was 17 items, 17 locations that citizens and others had brought to us, and each of the members of the Public Safety Committee was asked to prioritize those, and then Rick was going to consolidate those, and it'll be on our next agenda to finalize that list of priorities, you know, top to bottom. So, it's moving forward, and you will have your list, okay? And thanks to all those who had input on that, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Dodwell.
Joe, back to your situation regarding the outdoor lighting. I heard you just mention night sky. I'm assuming that's concerns about the night sky, and we want to minimize the deterioration of our starlight as much as possible?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you. I don't want to beat this topic to death, but adding on to what a couple of councilmembers have said already regarding topics that came up in that Admin and Public Works meeting and decisions that came into play with regard to putting the hold on the beautification of the center de fighter. Another part of it was the residents in Ward One and Ward Six, a quarter of our wards, not having access to broadband as defined by the FCC. And as broadband speeds or internet speeds continue to ramp up dramatically, and the requirement for them being in education, for kids to be able to go to school, for medicine, increasingly medicine will start moving to telemedicine, this is no longer just a luxury item where it can be said that, well, people moved out there and they should have known better. People have lived out there even before that, and it's not a luxury anymore, it's becoming a necessity just like water, electric, anything else. And there were comments made by people in the crowd of, you know, watching the millions that are being spent here in the city, and the basic utility isn't available, and I would certainly like to see on their behalf more budget in consideration into what's going to be required to put fiber into the streets and get faster internet services for the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from councilmembers? All right, we'll see none, then we'll move to the next section of the agenda, which is five for action. First item here, A, Board of Public Safety. Number one, the Citizens Committee, deer overpopulation. Rick?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council. At the September Board of Public Safety meeting, the board was provided a copy of the 2018 deer distance sampling report that was completed by the Wildwood precinct. The study was completed last March of 2018. It estimated the deer population density within a portion of the city of Wildwood, a 5.5 square mile area of the city of Wildwood. It estimated the deer density population to be about 80 deer per square mile. At that same meeting, Erin Shank, who's an urban wildlife biologist with the Missouri Department of Conservation, spoke to the board about deer population, and she presented to the board the recommended strategies that the Department of Conservation has for management of deer. She also spoke to what is considered to be a healthy population for deer. She stated that, I think before development occurred in these parts, that deer populations may have been as low as five deer per square mile. Essentially, she said anything- And essentially, she said anything greater than 20 deer per square mile is undesirable. And anytime you get populations 40 deer per square mile or greater, you get complaints. So this study has come out, again, it is for just a portion of Wildwood, but it has come out stating that our deer population is about 80 deer per square mile. So based on this evidence, we are clearly over a desirable level for deer population, possibly three to four times greater than what is desirable in the city of Wildwood. So this issue has been in front of the Board of Public Safety many times in the past. It is a complicated issue. There's lots of facets to it. What is the right thing to do ultimately? It's to try to reduce the population of deer that we have in Wildwood. So I think after discussing this item at the last meeting and discussing it many times prior to that, the board ultimately recommended a motion to send a city council a recommendation that a citizens committee be formed that would develop a management policy for the deer population within the city of Wildwood. So the idea would be to develop a management program that would reduce the population down from 80 per square mile to a safer level over a number of years. And I'm sure if you have any questions about this, I'd be glad to entertain them, or Mr. Bertolino, who's the council liaison, would be glad to address them as well. If they involve hunting, Captain Tanner would probably be the best person.
Okay, I've got a couple of council members ready to speak on the item. And before I do, I do want to check since Councilmember Bertolino is a member of that committee there, if you want to say any other items before we open it up.
I would just like to add to Rick's comments that the Board of Public Safety was unanimous in its decision that the council should, and the city should, take action to reduce the deer population. We've talked about this and talked about this for years, and we always come up short. In fact, several years ago, we even, we wouldn't even pass an ordinance that said you can't feed deer, which, you know, so. But the concern at this point is, we've reached the tipping point, as probably most of you already know. And that means that we're at the point where we're going to probably face and have a serious car deer accident within the city limits that would result in serious injury to the driver or passenger or even death. We do not want to be a council sitting here and have someone step up to that podium and say, what have you been doing for the last 20 years that you let the deer population in our city get four times greater than what is expected? That means we are going to have to hunt the deer, and that is going to be the tough nut for a lot of people, is we are going, the only solution is to hunt the deer. And that is recommendation from Erin Shank, the urban biologist. It has been successful in other cities, but it has tons of issues and problems and expense, and that's why we want a citizens committee to really get into this and come up with a viable plan.
All right, thank you. All right, I will now hand it over to Councilmember Greg Nanny.
Yes, the deer population, how much I've dealt with that over the many years from the very first Board of Public Safety. The deer have always been a problem. The deer have been a problem here for a long time, apparently. I'm not sure what the Osage Indians did about them. I think they probably hunted them and ate them, but I don't think they kill as many as we do with cars. We've killed over 200 deer in one year alone with automobiles. That seems to be their only predators are automobiles, which is unfortunate because that's a very expensive way to kill deer, and it's also not very nice for the deer either. But this is a problem that's enormous, and I won't go in belabor all the little details and nuances, but I would just warn you that there's going to be great controversy over this issue from a number of different quarters. There are some people who don't want the deer touched, and there are some people who would like to see all of them leave town. And I think somewhere between those two extremes is probably where you will eventually wind up. But let me point out to you that Erin Shank made it very clear, I've talked with and worked with Erin in the past, she's very knowledgeable about this problem. Town and Country has been one of the cities in the area that's had a considerable degree of experience with trying to, shall we say, relocate deer either to another location or to the afterlife, whichever. But they have found that it's been very difficult, and it's very expensive to accomplish. Plus, in addition, she's made it also quite clear that this is an ongoing problem, that once you start it, you can't really stop it. In other words, you can't just kill a bunch of deer this year and then say, okay, we fixed the problem, because guess what? In the next year or two, they'll be back. And so it's going to be interesting. I think we should have this committee. I think we should listen to what the residents think about this, but we're going to have to guide them because they're going to have to have some input from people who understand this problem in a lot more detail than even some of us here sitting at the council. But anyway, that's just a piece of educational advice for all of you. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Werther.
Thank you. I agree with all the sentiment and comments that have been made regarding this. I think some time ago, maybe 10 years or so ago, we were only at 60 deer per square mile, so apparently Wildwood's in a desirable place for deer as well amongst people. Having said all that, we have an interesting confluence of expertise and knowledge at the Board of Public Safety, from the police, fire departments, obviously Public Works because they deal with traffic, and so we have all these things coming together. And the Board of Public Safety also deals quite a bit with our own gun and hunting regulations. So in my mind, I'll make the motion at this point that we do go ahead and create our own deer committees. However, that deer committee is made up of the current members of the Board of Public Safety. I think they're their most experienced. They have the best knowledge, the best access to that knowledge to make that work. And if the Board of Public Safety needs to be expanded to help support this, I'm all for that. But I think that's where the confluence of all the information comes in, and that's the best place to go ahead and deal with this particular question going forward. So that's my motion.
Okay, so you're making a motion. Is there a second for the motion? Councilmember Manton seconds the motion. So we have the motion on the floor here, and we do have several speakers still. Councilmember Dodwell, I believe I skipped over you, so you're up next.
That's okay. I'm hard to see over here. Living here since before the city was incorporated, I live in Timber Ridge Estates, up off of Cox Creek, and I have a pathway that the deer have been walking nightly since the day we have moved in. I have continued to watch the deer create more babies and create more babies. They do two a year, guys, so for every one doe, you can get two. Sometimes both of them don't survive, but you can get two deer. So we are exponentially multiplying our deer population. I am all for being able to have bait and sharpshoot program, or we have a lot of hunters here in the city of Wildwood that have taken hunting safety courses, have prepared for those kinds of things. So I think we can and should utilize those resources. Deer have gone through sliding glass doors in Timber Ridge Estates. Deers have gone through the front bay windows in Timber Ridge Estates and then run out the sliding glass doors in the back of the house. I have had, I've got a 10-point buck that walks through my backyard and through my 100-pound Labrador down the hill and my 85-pound Labrador down the hill. So these are not shy, unconcerned, or very concerned deer folks. They have learned how to habituate themselves into our city, and I am all for anything that we can do to start to reduce that population because of, A, public safety, B, if we start, luckily, we do not have CWD disease, but just wait until we have a deer foaming at the mouth that dies and crashes in somebody's front yard, backyard, side yard, and we have to go pick it up. So I just think, as a city, we need to be cognizant of the fact that we have no predators for these animals at this point, and man and cars are about the only predators that we have. And we've seen Town and Country go through a variety of methods to try to mitigate this problem. So I'm very glad to see that the Department of Public Safety and the Police Department are looking at more immediate methods to reduce that population. But as Rick has already mentioned, this is going to be an ongoing issue. It's not going to stop after one hunt, whenever we decide to do it. It's going to have to be an annual event.
Thank you. Councilmember Bartoni.
Thank you. I agree with a lot that has been said. I think we will have a lot of citizens that will not be in favor of this, though, one of which is my wife, but I'm going to have, you don't want to have to deal with that. Yeah, the more the merrier for her. But my question would be for Rick. Rick, with the recommendation being to get the population down over several years, is Ms. Shank's recommendation to get it down to that 5 to 20 number, and how many years does she think that this will take?
Well, I think the goal she stated that was, she felt might be more reasonable, was 30 to 40 deer per square mile. I think it's difficult to know how quickly you could see that reduction. I think that was kind of the message that we heard. It's a difficult thing to know, but it would be an ongoing situation. So if we started a program, it's not a one-and-done situation at that point, is clear. It would have to be maintained over several years to get to a level. You'd have to continue to monitor the population to see what the results are of the program. So if you determine that it was successful, then you might be able to change your methods potentially at that point. But it would be a continual process and continual monitoring of the population to see what the results are.
I have Councilmember Bertolino, Manton, Jordan, and Taylor on the list right now. So I'll hand it over to Councilmember Bertolino.
Thank you. One, Tim, I'd like to ask, since we have a second on this, I'd like to add and amend your proposal just, but before I do that, to respond to Mr. Bartoni's comments there, that according to Erin Shank, it takes, how long does it take, was the question? And she was describing how the deer wise up pretty quickly, and you'll have a big harvest the first year and maybe even the second year. But then they start to smarten up. They have a predator now, and it's harder to get them out and, you know, to harvest. So she says it's impossible to say how long it will take to get it down to a manageable population. Okay, all right. Jim, if you don't mind, could you amend your proposal to say an ad hoc, where's the effect, an ad hoc citizens committee of one resident per ward will be established to work with the Board of Public Safety?
I'd like to actually keep it to the Board of Public Safety for the time being, let the board itself work through, come back with a plan, come back with some actionable items and develop that program. And then if we need additional residents and citizens to come in and do that, I'd be happy to do, happy to consider it at that point. But right now, my view, and given the years that I've been here, there's, I've said, a confluence of information, knowledge, regulation, other things that all come into play, and they all seem to center around the Board of Public Safety with regard to this particular issue. And so that's why I think the Board of Public Safety is the best suited to be that committee at this point.
If I push back on that, the committee did talk about this at some length, and it was the committee's desire to have the citizens' input up front. And we really felt, because it is going to be a sensitive issue, we know that it isn't cut and dry. There's a lot of citizens, Mr. Bartoni's wife included, who will push back on this and say, we were just, the committee was really concerned that we have all of that citizens' input, and certainly we have all the information, the data, and that's going to be available to this committee, but that the citizens' input really was a critical part and the reason we brought it forward to the council, because we could have just said, okay, we're going to put together a management plan and present it to the council. And the committee, after talking about it, said, no, we really need citizens' input.
I completely agree. You need citizens' input. I would expect that the formulation of such a program or plan, however you want to phrase it, will take several months, and it won't be done in probably in time, certainly not in time for this hunting season.
Absolutely.
And we're talking next year for that. So I would think to go the smart route, you're going to get a lot of citizen input up front and talk about it a number of different ways. I would expect meetings in the various wards, actually probably everybody's ward at this point, because I don't think anybody's immune to having deer from that standpoint. But I would think, take the time, get the input, and have the committee come back with its program and recommendation at that point, and then we'll go forward.
And just for clarification, Councilmember Werther, your motion before about having the committee made up of the Board of Public Safety, since they already are a committee, I think to have it proper here, we prefer the item back for that Board of Public Safety.
No, not referring, because sometimes we have had boards and commissions wear multiple hats. And they serve in one function, in great cases, the Board of Adjustment, right? The Board of Adjustment serves one function. They also serve as the Board of Administrative Appeal. So by, and by switching that hat, but the expertise is still the same, the requirements are still pretty much the same. So that's why I see this being that case for the Board of Public Safety, where they will simply say, okay, you know what? Maybe this, instead of the first Thursday of the month, the second Thursday of the month, maybe we're meeting as our citizens committee on deer management, and that's how they'll proceed.
Okay, well, I think we might want to, all right. Councilmember Manton.
This is a problem I'm very familiar with. I've lived in my residence now for about 27 years. I've changed out my landscaping at least three times because deer become acclimated very quickly once they get hungry. And I found that today, the only thing safe on my property is spiree, barkswoods, and barberries. Everything else is fair game. I'm shocked to change, to digress a little, that it's 87 per square mile and that the Department of Natural Resources thinks it should be about 20. I think that's way too high. MDC, I think that's way too high. Five or 10 would be more like it in my mind. And I think one thing that isn't talked about enough is the poor deer. I mean, do you see how they look? I mean, I can't tell you the number of deer I see around my property that are thin skin issues, et cetera. They're obviously unhealthy, and they're suffering too.
Thank you. Councilmember Jordan.
So I understand in respect that the quantity of deer per square mile is much higher than it should be, and that it's growing, and that there needs to be some plan developed for that. The only ask that I have is that, and I think it's important, that there is some representation in that committee focused on sensitivity to those like Don's wife and myself. I mean, I'll admit it. I know, I have names for the deer that populate my yard, you know? Doesn't mean that I don't believe that there should be a solution, but I think it's going to be really important to come forward with the most humane solution possible and to have an explanation to the public of those humane opportunities that have been looked at, whether it's birth control and whether, you know, that doesn't work or whatever. But I think that, you know, the success and the reception to this program for people like myself, that, you know, one of the reasons I bought land in Wildwood is because I like the wildlife, despite the fact that they eat my tulips. I just believe that it's going to be really important to be sensitive and to investigate the most humane approach possible. Thank you.
Okay. I have, just to go through here, I have Councilmember Taylor, Councilmember McCutcheon, and Councilmember Shea. And again, we have a motion on the floor for the committee here. So Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah. While I've been sitting here and listening, I've realized that my question was not germane to the topic at hand, so I'm going to withdraw.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yeah, I just want to echo Councilmember Bertolino's comments. I think while the Board of Public Safety can provide us with important information and detailed information, I think it's more important that we have a citizens committee so that we get public input. This does involve all the residents that live in the city, and I think the public committee could make as good a decision as the Board of Public Safety.
Okay, Councilmember Shea.
So just a couple of points of clarification. I see the six-point list that is a recommendation on action items from MDC. And so I'm going to sift this down to a really simplified understanding, which is, if you have too many deer, there really aren't too many options for getting rid of them, right? Obviously, we want to be humane. We don't want to replicate approaches that didn't work, like in Town and Country with the relocation, which obviously proved to be not good. So what I see here is, you know, obviously, the top three are recruit land on orders and including common ground properties to participate in archery hunting in order to increase harvest, explore a bait and sharpshoot program, and then communicate with the Department of Natural Resources and state parks regarding deer management. And I'm guessing that includes their hunting, allowing hunting in those parks. So I'm fully supportive of a committee, a citizens' committee, but these seem like some pretty straightforward recommendations. I'm like, well, I don't know what we're looking to have happen beyond this. I would not support a no-feed, not because I want to feed the deer, but I didn't like the outcome of that being that, you know, you've got neighbor reporting neighbor. It just seemed like very not, not a very good idea for our community. And feeding the deer, as it was described then, was, well, the people on the east side of 109 are feeding them and they're causing them to go, come from the west side, in which there was no, there was no data to support that contention. Obviously, there is enough deer to cover all the wards. And tracking them in terms of who's feeding them is, didn't make any sense. So I'm not sure if we need much more information, other than we need to reduce the population and how are we going to do that? So as long as we don't end up with some, I mean, the citizens' committee is great because we'll get input from all the wards. And I'm sure people from the more rural areas are going to have a little bit different take on it than the people in Ward two or three or four. I'm just not sure exactly what we're going to be able to do besides hunt them. So, thank you.
Okay. I have three more council members that wish to speak, Councilmember Greg Nani, McGowan, and Bertolino on deer overpopulation and the motion that we have on the floor here. So Councilmember Greg Nani.
Yeah, thanks again. It's an educational thing, the business about the feeding issue. It's already illegal, people. It's a state law. The Missouri Department of Conservation forbids it. If a game warden were to catch you feeding the deer, you will be cited, and they will not be nice. Trust me, they have big fines for that. So my suggestion is, don't feed the deer. It's asking for trouble. So the law already exists. We don't need to recreate the wheel. The other thing is that regarding this committee, there are a lot of technical aspects to the hunting ordinances and other issues, which a citizens' committee will have to come up to speed on, which will take some time for them to do. I think it's appropriate for the citizens to be involved. I don't think there's any question about that. But I think that what the Board of Public Safety can do is hold public hearings, where they have people come in and talk to them, which makes a lot more sense, so that people can come in and say their piece. Some of the things that these folks are going to suggest have already been tried and they don't work. And so we're not going to pursue the ones that don't work. I just, on a side, I won't delay the point. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember McGowan.
I just want to state, I agree with what Councilmember Werther has proposed as a workable solution. I attended the Board of Public Safety meeting recently where this matter was discussed, where they recommended this citizen committee. Like John, I think, in my mind, that's just sort of, in a way, kicking it down the road even further because of the time that it's going to take for citizens to get up to speed with many of the technical aspects, whether it involves the hunting regulations or other things. So I just think it's going to be much more efficient to arrive at a humane solution to the problem by asking the Board of Public Safety to delve into this, take the responsibility for it, which it rests in their bailiwick anyway. And they can certainly have one or more, as many as they want, public sessions to obtain the input, the resident input that is desired, to make sure that we have covered all the bases properly. So I definitely agree with Councilmember Werther's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bertolino. Okay, so we have the motion on the floor. Does everyone understand the motion? Yes. Okay. With that motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? We have one oppose. Councilmember McCutcheon. Any abstain? All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, under City Administrator B, we have the Municipal League of Metro St. Louis Propose Resolution in Support of Proposition D, All Wards. And Ryan will be speaking to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the city council. Later this week, on Thursday evening, the Municipal League of Metro St. Louis will be holding its monthly membership meeting. On their agenda, they will have a resolution in support of Proposition D, which is the statewide fuel tax increase. And with any action by the municipal league, each of the cities will be asked to cast their vote either in favor or against or in abstention of the resolution. Councilmember Werther's agreed to be our representative, and I've provided some background, but my recommendation is that the city of Wildwood abstain from the vote for a number of reasons, but mostly due to the fact that the city of Wildwood will, in fact, receive revenue of approximately $560,000 annually, once, if passed, the measure is fully implemented. And given that, I think it would be best that we remain neutral and not show support or opposition of such a measure.
Have Councilmember Shea.
So is it your position, Mr. Thomas, that the city should remain neutral because we would be using our, the official status of the city in support of something we would benefit from?
That is, that is correct in terms of financial benefit to the city.
Thank you.
City Attorney Young may wish to weigh in on whether we could vote in favor of this, but for the perception of what it is, I'm recommending we abstain.
Any other comments related to the matter? Councilmember Werther?
Mr. Thomas, since I plan on being at the municipal league meeting and where this item will come up for vote, obviously, I, council members, I would appreciate some direction with regard to that, to back up that stance when that vote comes up at the municipal league meeting Thursday evening. Thank you.
Have Councilmember Stein.
I move that we accept the city administrator's recommendation to abstain.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor made by Councilmember Stein to accept the city administrator's recommendation to abstain, seconded by Councilmember McCutcheon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? We have one abstention, Councilmember Shea. The motion passes. All right. Now, under miscellaneous, we have Councilmember Bertolino.
If I may, there is going to be a candidate forum here in the council chambers next Tuesday evening, not tomorrow, but a week from tomorrow. We have invited and we have acceptance from six candidates, the two Senator, state senator candidates, and did we get something from Dottie Bailey or not? Not yet. So we have state rep candidate, all the state rep candidates who have been invited and who, and do you, Amanda, can you rattle off who we've got committed so far? Okay. All right. There, we invited all of the state representative candidates and the state senator candidates who impact Wildwood. And we have acceptances, I'd say, from six of those candidates who will be here. And it will be monitored and run by the League of Women Voters. We encourage anyone who has questions for our candidates to write them down, bring them that night, and so we can have a significant input from our community. And I don't know if there's any other forum in the area for citizens to hear from these candidates, so please make a note, 7:00 to 8:30 next Tuesday here in the council chambers. Thank you.
Okay. Any other items under miscellaneous? All right. Moving on to adjournment, do we have a motion for adjournment? Councilmember McCutcheon, seconded by Councilmember Manten. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The motion passes. City council work session is adjourned, so it is now 6:59. We will take a five-minute break, if that works for the council. We'll begin at 7:05, the city council meeting. Thank you.
Is it whole?
All right. Welcome, welcome every, does this work? Are we good? All right. Thank you. All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, September 24th city council meeting. Thank you for joining us tonight here in the room and also on livestream. So we'll start first with our roll call, but before we get into that, do I make a friendly reminder, if you do have that cell phone there, please put it on to the buzzer mode or turn off the ringer there. So we will move into roll call here, so I'll ask Ms. Foster to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Greg Nani.
Here.
Councilmember McGowan.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Manten.
Here.
Councilmember Shea.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Boeb.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Garitano.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and Constitution Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Section four of the agenda, the approval of the minutes for September 10th, 2018, the work session and regular agenda minutes. Do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes? Made by Councilmember Manten, seconded by Councilmember McGowan. Any questions or comments before approving? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain?
Abstain.
We have two abstentions, Councilmember Dodwell and Councilmember Dillard. Minutes are approved. Thank you. Now we'll move into public participation. Oh, Councilmember Werther, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Garitano. I'd like to go ahead and make an amendment to the agenda before we get into it formally. Under unfinished business, we have Bill 2392. That bill and that item had been, had been referred to the Administration Public Works Committee for review and recommendation. That has yet to occur, so it's premature to have this item back on our agenda for, as unfinished business. So I'll move to remove this from the agenda.
We have a motion made by Councilmember Werther and seconded by Councilmember Taylor, and that is to amend with a removal to the agenda. and that is to amend with a removal to the agenda for the item, Bill 2392. Again, a removal of the item of the agenda is allowed. We're not able to add items to the agenda per sunshine law. So with that motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Oppose.
We have one opposed, Councilmember McCutcheon. Council, any abstain? Okay, motion passes. All right, moving on then to public participation, which is five. Just a couple of comments here. Public participation, as you know, is a valuable component of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak, please fill out a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk who's seated here at the left of the podium. You'll be called in the order of the cards as they are received. When your name is called, please approach the podium, state your name and address. Please make sure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so. There is a five-minute time limit per speaker. The light on the podium will turn red when the time limit is reached. Each speaker is provided with one opportunity to speak and time may not be shared with others. Please address only the council. Talking between those speaking at the podium and others in the audience is prohibited. And our public participation hearings are not a time for questions and answers with us. Any questions you raise this evening will be duly noted by our city team members seated next to the podium. When indicated, either they or one of us will respond to you personally or place the answer on the city council page of our website. Please be respectful to others in making your remarks. This means that interrupting other public speakers, council members, and using profane and abusive language are prohibited. And in advance, I want to thank everyone for following this. All right, Ms. Foster, please call out the first speaker.
Steve Taylor, Ward 4.
Yes, Steve Taylor, 16514 West Glen Farms Drive. I have a very brief statement, well, it's not very brief, but I have a brief statement. Mr. Mayor Protem, council members, thank you for the opportunity to address the council and to address you. I do not typically speak during the public comment period because I am a member of the council myself, and this is primarily a time for residents to be heard. Today I'm doing so because of an unusual circumstance. The mayor who is on vacation has denied my request to talk about our public speaking rules from the dais. I have essentially been prohibited from discussing legislation from the dais that would eliminate rules instituted by the mayor that prohibits residents from asking questions of elected officials. For background, I would like to state that on September 19th, I sent an email to mayor. It said, "As I would like to discuss the history of our rules for public participation, please add to the 924 council agenda under miscellaneous the item 'public participation.' These types of requests are usually perfunctory and seen as a basic courtesy to members of the city council." My request was denied. As a result, I am here speaking before you during the public participation section of the meeting. Although I am disappointed in the mayor's decision, it is indeed his prerogative. I would also like to thank the mayor pro tem, Mr. Garitano, for being professional and courteous regarding this matter. Thank you, Mr. Garitano. As many of you on the council know, I have long been interested in amending our rules for public participation. I would like to allow residents to ask direct questions of the representatives. In fact, I campaigned on this. I knocked on many doors in my ward and found that an overwhelming majority of residents believe that they should be allowed to ask questions of their elected officials. On July 19th, I introduced an amendment to our code at the Administration Public Works Committee meeting. The legislation would allow more freedom of speech by Wildwood residents before their elected officials. They would be able to ask a direct question, and if an elected official wished to give a brief response, they could do so as directed and facilitated by the mayor. Councilmember Garitano, who is chairman of the committee, was very accommodating and allowed for an in-depth discussion of the proposed legislation. As a result of the discussion, changes were made to the amendment to accommodate concerns and opinions, and it was placed on the committee's agenda for further action. On September 11th, the amendment was again taken up by the committee. Councilmembers and the city attorney had a robust discussion of the proposed legislation, including policy and legal considerations. The committee voted four to two in favor of the amendment. On the next day, September 12th, I was sent an email by the city administrator. It said, "At your convenience, please send me the final language from last night's discussion so we have it for the 924 work session." That same day, I spoke with the mayor pro tem, and we both believed the legislation would be before the committee today as this would have been the normal order of business. Two days later, on September 14th, I received a text from the mayor. He informed me that the amendment would not be placed on the 924 work session agenda, but rather he would be postponing it until 10:08 council meeting. In a subsequent phone conversation, the mayor explained that he was intending to postpone the amendment because he was on vacation. I told the mayor that although I understood his interest, I did not agree that it was a good idea to do so. I did not agree because for the mayor to unilaterally postpone an agenda item is bad practice, and that is ripe for abuse. Once we start down that road, any mayor could potentially postpone agenda items until a favorable composition of council members are present for a vote. Mr. Garitano, I am going a little bit over. Could I ask for unanimous consent to extend my time a bit? Thank you. "Once we start down that road, any mayor could potentially postpone agenda items until a favorable composition of council members are present for a vote." I believe that a much better way to handle this would have been for the mayor pro tem to request a postponement due to the mayor's vacation schedule and let the council take a vote on the matter. We would have thus avoided any appearance of impropriety. On September 14th, I sent a letter to the entire council, the mayor, city administrator, and attorney characterizing what I believe to be an irregular handling of the amendment. Shortly thereafter, on the same day, I received an email from the mayor stating that he could not begin to express his disappointment in me that I had written the aforementioned email to the council. In another email, CC'd to the entire council, the mayor stated that the amendment might not even be placed on the 10-8 agenda since, in his opinion, it might be out of order. In essence, the work of the committee might be indefinitely postponed. This claim seemed retaliatory. Moreover, the mayor's concerns with the amendment was flawed and that it was critical of language currently in the code and did not have anything to do with the legislation's new wording. Regardless, any such issue should be addressed by the council as the city's legislative body. It is troubling that an amendment which was thoroughly vetted in committee is now being characterized as possibly out of order by the mayor. Moreover, his unwillingness to allow even the discussion of legislation during his absence compounds the irregularity with which this amendment has been handled. This is especially true when the mayor had an opportunity to participate in the amendment's consideration in committee. The purpose of the free speech amendment, as it has been dubbed by the media, has had extra hurdles unnecessarily placed before it. In my estimation, the main reason for this opposition is that it seeks to roll back rules instituted by a mayor that increasingly situates himself as the only elected city official who enjoys direct, real-time communication with residents during public events as codified in statute. Our current rules forbid a resident from asking a council member a question during a meeting like this. Such a question would have the benefit of being on the record and livestream for the advocacy of the public. It is instead shunted into a one-on-one communication between the resident and their councilperson. Such communication is valuable but does not replace the transparency of an on-the-record inquiry. At best, questions to the council may be sometimes addressed by anonymous employee on the city's website. Yet the mayor can at his discretion offer insights and points of clarifications in response to questions or comments during these meetings. I am not claiming that this is by design, but planned or not, the consequences are real. It is in this context that I find the refusal by the mayor to allow discussion of public petition rules when he is on vacation very troubling. As the original author of the free speech amendment, I intend to make a motion that the legislation be prepared to be placed on the 10-8 council agenda. I have been informed by our city attorney that it is within the power of the council to do so. I have received assurances from the mayor pro tem, Mr. Garitano, that I would be allowed to do so during the miscellaneous section of the agenda. I respectfully request that you as council members and members of this city's legislative body vote in favor of allowing the free speech amendment to proceed to the next stage so that it can be considered by the full council. It is the right thing to do. Please give the free speech amendment a fair hearing. We can do this. We are council members, and we do not need to wait for the mayor to come home to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Next speaker, please.
Neil Burns, Ward 2.
My name is Neil Burns. I live at 2500 Pepperfield Court. I come tonight to speak in support of Dan Rotan's nomination to the Historic Preservation Commission. As an aside, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Boe on his appointment to Ward 6. First chance seeing him since I was last in this hall. Dan moved here to the area in 1990, so he was a resident prior to our incorporation. He lived in the Dartmouth subdivision over by Lafayette High School. And he moved away for a little while, took five years in Memphis, then retired and chose to move back to Wildwood because he loved the area so much. Dan is currently a neighbor in our subdivision of Brentmore Place. He's a current trustee. As a matter of fact, Dan came to my house and encouraged me to also volunteer to be a trustee of the subdivision, and I was very reluctant, quite frankly. But in doing so, I could see that Dan had our interests in mind, and I think that continues with his nomination to the Historic Preservation Committee. Dan has always been in support of Wildwood's master plan. We've been here to the council meetings before, talking in support of it in line with some of the issues that we've faced as a subdivision. He constantly volunteers for projects in the subdivision as well as in the community. He is also very active in charitable endeavors, and I would say that he would be an excellent candidate for that position should you decide. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Next speaker, please.
Ginger Dolly, Ward 8.
Good evening. My name's Ginger Dolly, 2419 Claire Lane. Tonight, I'm here to say thank you. Thank you for passing the Main Street Roundabout Project. There's a lot of debate over that project, and I'm here to tell you, we appreciate your consideration of a project that's going to impact our subdivision. It's going to improve the safety of Highway 109 between 100 and Old Manchester, and the residents are really looking forward to those improvements. We know it's a little ways off, but it's definitely coming up as an important part of our community and where we live. I wanted to say a special thanks to Mr. Garitano and to Mr. Stevens, who I both had the pleasure of discussing this project with. I wanted to say thank you for your service to our Ward 8 and to all the other city council members. We appreciate your consideration and thank you for the majority vote in passing 2382. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly. Next speaker, please.
Dean Klor, Ward 6.
Name's Dean Klor, I'm a registered professional engineer. I live at 1614 Wolf Trail Road, Ridge Road Farms, Wildwood East, I guess it's called. I'm kind of here to speak on behalf of Dan Routen. I was an employee at Busman Fuse Company for 42 years. Dan was there 28 of those. As an engineer, he's an excellent planner and, more importantly, an excellent implementer, an executor of plans that are put in place, not just talking about them. I think it would be a great asset to Wildwood to have Dan in the position of, on the historical committee. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Klor. Next speaker, please.
Mary Morton, Ward 2.
Mary Morton, 211 Stricker Farms Court. I actually have a couple of things I'd like to comment on tonight. And I was pondering over what it would be like to write some notes before I came and have some questions that I could ask and have answered. And I found it kind of difficult to kind of write it up. I'm so used to writing them. Whereas, you know, I'm speaking to all of you and then not necessarily ever getting much comment back. So unless I chase somebody down later and I force that answer out. But nonetheless, the first thing I wanted to talk about is Steve did a really nice job in presenting that, and I was really happy to hear the committee pass that bill on freedom of speech. Primarily, for those that are listening out in the audience on livestream, it really is the portion of free speech that we're allowed to ask a question. And I know it's come up before over the years, and I certainly can understand the simple fact that it does take time, you know, out of the city meeting to answer a question. But I thought about it a lot, and I realized that the whole purpose for everyone here, as we're all residents together in this community, is that the residents come first. So what else matters the rest of the evening if you cannot answer a question or at least find out, all of you, that someone in the community is either suffering or really concerned or not having a phone call returned or et cetera, et cetera. So putting that in the perspective that I think it needs to be, we all know that we have the right to have freedom of speech, but it clearly is a difference when you're the only one in the relationship up here speaking, and there's not a two-way street. There's not, you know, a humanity to it. So I don't really, I can't imagine that anyone sitting up here who has decided to be a representative of their ward and of the city, administrator and the place of mayor would have an issue with, you know, kind of expressing and approving, you know, a little bit of an extension on allowing people to ask a question or two. Again, I know there's going to be a conversation amongst you all about time and also about the correction or, you know, maybe not even knowing the answer. There's no fault to anybody here that doesn't know the answer to a question. Why not open up a venue or an avenue of communication that might extend into a further experience? And maybe other people would learn something too. So again, I don't see any reason why anybody here would say no to asking questions in the future. We have arrived at a place in this city where it's not okay anymore to encourage people to come, to say what they need to say at the podium, take time out, maybe even get dressed up a little bit. Maybe not, but, you know, just to give a respectful answer. We are, again, all residents here in this community. Nobody shares a title higher or lower than the other. So that's kind of what I wanted to say. So I'm in favor of this, and I would hope that amongst you all, you would see that it is important. It actually will bless this community. I really think it will. The other thing I wanted to talk about, two more little things, is at the last meeting, the sidewalk issue came up, and again, for all of those people, right away, I spoke, I think it was a month ago or so, and Dave Bertolino decided to help me take this on, so I wanted to say thank you to Dave. And then out of nowhere, this sidewalk thing turned into kind of like sidewalk extravaganza. But anybody who lives off Stricker Road would, you know, certainly love to be benefit of $1.3 million out of the budget for that. I'm a little concerned that the project became very large and we might lose, you know, the point of which we originally spoke of, and that was to provide safety for those people who are more active and being active with their children on that road. And so is it possible that we can go back to visit what's more urgent? And that is providing some sidewalk in those places on that road with the possibility of in the future adding more to the immediate need that needs to happen? And especially to my neighbors down in Point Clayton who are carrying, you know, basically going over to that park with carriages, baby, little strollers, and are having to take a little chance out on the road. I think that's probably the one that's in most need of safety. So again, in the spirit of safety and caring for one another, I believe this should be addressed, some of the parts a little bit quicker than maybe this longer, bigger project that I think could turn into a lengthy conversation. The other, the last subject I'd like to bring up is my recent experience myself, and I understand others. It came to me just how grateful I am for our police force here in Wildwood and policemen and women in uniform that serve our community. Yes, this is their career, but at the same time, they do risk their lives. And they spend, some of them spend all night long driving around in a very dark center of Wildwood with very windy streets, and, you know, they have to respond to any call that's needed, and they never know what they're going to approach. And so recently, there has been some issues in the area, and I did ask a lot of questions in a lot of places to make sure I covered my bases on that. And although I don't as a resident, nor does anybody else ever want to have an experience that, you know, makes you feel somewhat alarmed or afraid in your community. that, you know, makes you feel somewhat alarmed or afraid in your community, but the policemen, policemen and women that work at nighttime in every community are really in the most danger and really do deserve our help. So I have discussed this with others, and nobody seems to be in disagreement of this as well. It's fairly simple that we, and speaking to those people out in the audience and those on livestream, maybe they could share with their friends and neighbors. It would be very nice if we could light up our neighborhoods a little bit more and lock our doors, lock our cars, take our valuables out, don't become a target for these folks, and turn your front porch light on. It costs about $7.80 a year, and it will light up that neighborhood and any of those police officers that are out at night trying to make sure that we're safe, I'm sure would appreciate a little help. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Morton. Next speaker, please.
Kelly Werther, Ward Seven.
Good evening, Kelly Werther, 539 Nantucket Point Drive. I wasn't going to talk tonight, so I'm not really prepared, but Councilmember Taylor, thank you. Councilmember Garitano, thank you. You've let people go over tonight and let no one up there melted. So you guys, let's look at this. All 16 of you are here tonight, and I'm really glad. I am going to talk, I think, about what Mr. Taylor talked about. I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed in Mr. Thomas specifically for sending that email saying he's going to put it on the agenda, and then, of course, Mayor Bowlin. No surprise how I feel. But I guess one thing that I question all of you is, you know, you all ran for your offices. I've worked with a lot of you. I've helped a lot of you, and a few of you, we don't agree on what you're doing anymore, and that's okay. But you've all talked about the importance of relationships with your constituents. Now, I'm going to go back in the past. The man I'm married to is your mayor, and he allowed you all to talk, and there were no lawsuits filed that I'm aware of from the city, and I believe you all have had some good conversations. I think if I go back and I look at minutes, you all have responded back in some form that are up there under Mayor Werther. I guess what I'm trying to say is, we are a community, and we communicate as a community. And I don't know what happened in the past two years that has caused you all to have a little fear, but that's what it comes about to your residents. When I help the recent people, as I like to call them, Super Six plus what? I've gone door-to-door for almost all of them. And you know what they all want? They all want to be able to talk. I worked the polls. Lots of people showed up, and they want to talk. They approached, I was there with Ms. McCutcheon, I'm sorry, Councilmember McCutcheon, and she had great communication with her residents. This nonsense of a city team member is going to get back to you has got to end. I follow up. I follow up with the people who get up here and talk, and I call the residents. I do some good research. And you know what? A lot of them are not getting their follow-up from a city team member. I know Councilmember McCutcheon is in charge of this internet response. It's not what they want. They want to hear from the people who have taken the time to run, and they want to hear from you all, even if it's just a brief, brief. Not, no one wants to get up here, and none of us want to hear anybody up here ramble forever, and neither do the people in livestream. But it's not going to hurt you all to sit here and smile, respond back to the people who put you all up there. And I think it's really important. I don't see how any of you could think that there is a problem with talking to your constituents. What, where, and why is there a fear? Mr. Thomas, the same thing as an employee, be able to respond to the, you're not elected official, and Mr. Young, he doesn't speak to residents. But what's the fear? Where has the fear come from? And I want an answer. I want to hear from a city team member tomorrow. I want a phone call. I want an email. What is the reason? Why are you all fearful to talk to your residents? These people put you up here. I have talked to every single one of you up here. I have followed you after meetings. I've called Councilmember Dodwell last year when I served on a committee. She spent time with me. And it could have been answered here. Don't you want to do your jobs while you're on the dais, just besides getting along with each other? That's all I want to say. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Werther. Next speaker, please.
Jean Vedvig, Ward Four.
Thank you to all the council members who supported, Councilmembers Taylors.
Ms. Vedvig, please.
Oh, you know what? I am so sorry. Let's do this the right way.
Thank you.
Jean Vedvig, 16709 Clayton Road, Wildwood, Missouri, 63011. So thank you, Steve, and thank you to the council members who support this initiative. I have two questions. So let's see. First, there's the, I would like to know the status of the sidewalk that is near McBride Point, which is in Ward Three and Ward Four. In order to get to Anniversary Park, we need that little sidewalk that's been on the books for, I don't know, a year or two, or, it's been on there way too long. We could probably get together and carry a couple bags of concrete down there and finish it ourselves. So can anyone give me the status?
I'll find out for you, Jean.
Thank you, Katie. I mean, Councilmember Dodwell. Do it the right way.
Okay, it's okay.
All right. And the other thing is, is to the Board of Public Safety, will you take into your discussion about the deer and maintaining where you hunt, where any hunting will be occurring in different parts of Wildwood? Because there are many parts that cannot have open hunting. Our house, I don't like to do the "our" house deal, but we can't see our neighbor behind us. But we have, like, less, you know, we have less than an acre, barely over three-quarters of an acre. But the young man behind us was riding his ATV today, and I couldn't even see him. But if there were hunters out there, they couldn't see him and his four little brothers that are always running through the creek and through the woods. And that's what neighborhoods are all about, is all these little kids that are running through the woods, and then there are some adults that get out there, too. So you currently, on your ordinance, have restrictions on where hunting can be, and I wanted to ask you if you will maintain those restrictions in order to provide the safety that the ordinance presents for the residents?
May I, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem? May I respond quickly?
Yes, sure.
Talk to me after the meeting. I've got a long speech for you. I'll answer that question for you.
Okay. All right. That sounds great. And I would like to also thank our Wildwood Police Department. We recently had a fellow that we were unable to catch up with who was going door-to-door asking residents to sign a petition so that he could hunt in our neighborhood by combining three lots. Well, now the neighbors and I know where the dead deer are coming from, because obviously he said he's been doing this for quite a while, but it's not permissible. So when I spoke with our Wildwood Police Department, they were kind enough to send out letters to the two neighboring subdivisions, which is like almost 800 homes, and explain the ordinance. And it's really very helpful and a great service provided by our police department. So if we would, the hunting, totally get it. I have family members who are hunters. I'm not. I feed the birds. I have hangers. But, you know, the deer come and scoop up what's left. So I'm not a hunter, but I understand what you're doing. But it's important to me and the neighbors that we don't change the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Vedvig. All right, moving along then to the, before I do, are there any other speakers that wish to come forward? Okay, moving forward then, Section Six, the Mayor Pro Tempore's announcements and appointments, SOA announcements. As you all notice, I'm sitting in a different seat tonight as the city's mayor pro tempore. As the mayor pro tempore, I'm selected by the city council among its members, so I'm honored to be holding this position. I have the duty and the privilege to preside over the city council meeting this evening, although I'll be sitting in the mayor's chair this evening. Oh, I guess we got a call. So, all right. You're testing me. All right. So as I'm sitting here in this seat tonight, you know I'm still a council member, and I retain the office and the duties of a council member. So therefore, I have the right to vote on matters presented for action by the city council, but also be aware that I have no power of veto, nor can I break a tie vote of the city council. So that explains to you how the mayor pro tempore works. So with that, I do want to repeat what Councilmember Bertolino mentioned. We have a candidate forum coming up, and also this coming weekend, the Wildwood Barbecue Bash takes place. So hopefully, we get to see as many of you that can make it there. So moving on then to Section B of the agenda, the appointments. We have two of them for this evening. The first one, Dr. Kenneth Remy, I apologize if I've mispronounced your last name, for the Board of Adjustment as an alternate in Ward Three. This term ends in August 2020, so I would like to ask Dr. Remy to come forward, and if you'd like to make a few comments and speak about yourself to the council, and then we'll entertain any comments, questions from the council.
Sure. Sorry, I'm tall, so I hope this transmits here. I might be the tallest person to speak here. I sent an email to everyone, hopefully, folks. I did actually read all of the documents that I, that I didn't. I'm happy to answer questions about what I've read, but I'm excited to actually come before the council here to express my desire to be part of this Board of Adjustment. I've had the fortunate privilege to be able to speak to about six of you. I've had the fortunate privilege to talk to Dan Farr as well, who's been on that committee for about 10 years, with a plan also to use him as a good advisor moving forward, if so approved today by the council. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any council members that would like to ask any questions? We have Councilmember Shay and Councilmember Greg Nannie. Please, go ahead.
No questions. I just wanted to reiterate my support for Dr. Remy's appointment. We did spend a lot of time talking just the other day, and first time ever appointee has ever offered that they've read the master plan, the plan of intent, and the charter. And I commented that that's never happened, and he is ideally the perfect candidate, just on that. So I trust him. I believe that he has a great understanding and a reverence for what we stand for here in Wildwood, and I look forward to you being approved.
I will say also, I appreciate your comments. I don't know if this is a negative against me, but I also binge-watched all the town council, city council meetings as well, so.
Oh, man.
That's a negative.
That's a negative. Thank you, Steve.
Councilmember Greg Nannie.
Yes, I too had a chance to talk with Dr. Remy at some length, and I would support his nomination as well, primarily for two reasons. Number one is he's a pediatric, he does pediatrics, and I think this council could probably use some of that. The other thing, the other thing is that he's a doctor, and I'm really tired of being outnumbered by lawyers. So I think we need to have him on something here, okay? Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have any other council members? Okay, Councilmember McGowan.
I also had the opportunity last evening to speak to Dr. Remy. Appreciate your taking the time. I hope you got that Ebola off your hands when you shook hands with him.
I wiped it on his face.
That was very impressive professional credentials also, and the experience that you explained, or how you can see those professional experiences as a physician, a scientist, tying in to the Board of Adjustment, I thought that was very interesting as well. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion. So I have Councilmember Dillard making the motion, and Councilmember Shay. And I'm assuming that is a motion for approval of this appointment?
Yes.
Okay. So therefore, we have this motion on the floor. Any other comments, questions, discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Councilmember Greg Nannie.
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Manten.
Yes.
Councilmember Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Boe.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Stein.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Great, motion passes. Congratulations. Welcome as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, second item of appointment, we have Dan Rowton. Apologize, too, if I've missed. So come forward, Dan, and please, if you'd like to speak to the council and share a little bit about yourself.
Dan Rowton, 2520 Pepper Mill Lake Court, Brentmore Place subdivision, right off the Valley Road, Ward Two. First of all, I would like to thank my colleagues for the kind word. Thank you very much. Really appreciate that. And secondly, I would very much like to thank Mayor Bowlin for his recommendation, along with Ray Manten, his recommendation, along with the councilman, Mr. Bartoni, for his recommendation as well. I appreciate the opportunity. I've always been a history buff. I also think it's very important that we always consider the past as we plan for the future, and that's always been a big part of what I think this new role can do. And I would gladly answer any questions anybody may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rowton. And this again, for council, this is for Historic Preservation Commission as an alternate for Ward Two, with the unexpired term ending in April 2020. So do we have any council members? Councilmember Bartoni.
So I don't necessarily have a question, but some of you may recognize Dan from a couple of years ago, that Polte Homes was looking to build a subdivision at Valley Road and Stricker, and there was a lot of controversy over the lot size, because Dan was very active in making sure that Wildwood stuck to our master plan and that that subdivision was hence not built because of, you know, leadership like Dan and getting the residents and this council to stick with what we should have stuck with and made that right decision. So I think it'd be a great addition to the Historic Planning or Preservation Commission, and I look forward to having him in the city.
Councilmember Manten.
I'll just echo some of the marks you heard previously from some of his friends and neighbors I've known for Dan for a while now, and I was very in tune to his activities with that Polte proposal at Valley Road. I think he did a wonderful job, a good understanding of the master plan, the city charter, et cetera. And he is a subdivision trustee at Brentmore Place, one of the largest subdivisions in the city, and he's very involved in city business, and I think he'd be a welcome addition to the council, and with that, I'll make a motion, we accept and approve his nomination.
Thank you. So councilmember's made, Councilmember Manten has made a motion for approval of the appointment here, seconded by Councilmember Bartoni. Any other questions, comments? Okay, with that motion, then, I'll ask Ms. Foster to do a roll call vote.
Councilmember McGowan.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Manten.
Yes.
Councilmember Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Boe.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Stein.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nannie.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Rowton.
Thank you all.
All right, that concludes the section here. We're going to move to the next one. There are no public hearings for tonight, so we'll move right into legislation with So the item that we'll discuss is item in Bill 2397, and this is before the council for final passage and concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? I have Councilmember Dodwell making a motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Stein. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? All right, Ms. Foster, please read Bill 2397.
Bill 2397, an ordinance revising the budget for the City of Wildwood, Missouri for the fiscal year commencing on January 1st, 2018, and ending on December 31st, 2018.
Okay, Bill 2397 is on the floor for discussion here, but Ryan, do you have anything else that you want to add before we get started?
I have no updates, but again, this is the mid-year budget amendment that we do each year, following the first six months of our budget cycle.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. All right, is there any discussion? I have Councilmember Greg Nannie.
Yes, thank you. I talked to Ryan earlier today, because I was going blind looking at numbers, okay? I mean, he's the accountant guy, right, you know? But just could you summarize, without going through 27 pages, is there any major shifts in this budget that are noteworthy that you think we should know about?
I wouldn't necessarily say there are any major shifts. A lot of the items have to do with changes that have occurred throughout the year, particularly on the capital side, projects that get delayed, or new projects that get identified. In some areas, we may need greater resources than anticipated, and other areas, less. But there's a pretty extensive list of items. I wouldn't necessarily point to any one in particular, although a few of the highlighted items were noted in the report.
In view of my comments earlier about the road improvement issues, is there anything in here that might not be used, that could be shifted somewhere else on an emergency basis?
As far as funds that are in the budget that would not be utilized, there are, particularly on the capital improvement plan side, many projects due to circumstances relating to the management of the project, whether it be obtaining right-of-way easements, or general scheduling of projects, many times they will get pushed back to a later year, but that expense would then occur next year instead. So it's not necessarily freeing up funds. At this point in the year, if you're asking whether we can budget funds for something new, it would probably depend on what it is, but there's not a lot of time to enter into a new initiative, given particularly if it would involve approving contracts, we would have to identify vendors and so forth. So I think anything new at this point would be best reserved for the 2019 budget review process that will be starting up very shortly.
And you said it was November 26th that we would be taking that up, is that correct?
November 26th, if that's our second council meeting in November, that is where we will hold the public hearing for the adoption of the budget, and that would be an appropriate time for the public to offer their input on the 2019 budget. Certainly leading up to that, we'll have a number of committee meetings where we will also review priorities for inclusion in the budget at that time as well.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Stevens.
Ryan, so I realize $90,000, we're like so close, like less than 1% when you're talking about over on the expenditures, but are there any plans from now until the end of the year to try to get closer to the original budget, or is this just a conservative estimate on what we need to finish out the year?
We will certainly endeavor to reduce expenditures in other areas to at least partially offset the increase in identified budget amendments on the expenditures. A lot of times, in the mid-year budget report, we will identify items that we're certain about needing amendments, but the reality is, there are a number of line items in the budget, although not proposed for a reduction in their amount, will likely end up with an expenditure amount less than what we've budgeted. So I would expect that we will finish the year better than what the mid-year suggests.
Okay, thanks. And then on, there are two items, which I think that you listed as new items into the budget, which are the crosswalk improvements for 109 and miscellaneous sidewalk improvements. Can you expand on those? Like what are we looking at there?
Might ask Mr. Brown to step up and describe those in more detail, as those are public works improvement projects.
So yeah, as part of the adjustment for mid-year, we, the two projects you're referring to are new, well, they're not new projects, we've talked about them, but we've never actually had them budgeted. So the one would account for the construction that was discussed earlier, the section of sidewalk on Clayton Road at Anniversary Park. We never had that broken out as a specific project, so we added a project, miscellaneous sidewalk improvements. The idea would be, we would fund that out of that general ledger item. The second one was relative to a project that we've been working on, which is similar. We'd never had it programmed as a separate project, but it's a crosswalk improvement project on 109. There are several crosswalks we are looking at modifying for safety improvements, so we never had that budgeted or called out as an explicit project, so we added it this time, so it is budgeted now officially.
And are those projects that you're going to get done this year, or is it something that could easily be put onto?
Well, that was the hope, yes. We're getting very close. There was a question by Ms. Pedwick about the status of the Clayton Road sidewalk. We're going to start getting bids for that work, and the hope would be, we would get a contractor onboard and start that yet this year, so that's why we wanted to get that into the budget. The 109 crosswalk improvements, we're planning on bidding that here shortly as well, so that is the hope.
Okay, and then where are those 109 and crosswalk improvements? Just curious.
Literally, where are they?
Yeah.
So there are, the main one is at Pond River Loop Road, like the east side, the east approach is a crosswalk over Pond River Loop Road at 109. There's also improvements to the crosswalks at Shepherd Road in 109, Bent Ridge at 109, and also there's a crosswalk on Tule Road south of 100 that also had some improvements proposed as part of that project.
Councilmember Shay.
Just for the benefit of the public, and maybe some of the newer members of council haven't been through the budget process before, on your mid-year financial report, accomplishments, objectives, number three is provide an opportunity for a comprehensive review and determination of whether budget adjustments may be warranted or necessary. Would it be accurate to say that that review and determination will be in advance of the discussions on budget, or at the time we start discussing a budget?
Sorry, are you referring to something that's in this report?
Yeah, the budget amendment, 2397, is that what?
Okay. That was referring to the review that had occurred by staff in order to prepare this item for the agenda here tonight.
Right.
And we will conduct a similar review in developing and reviewing the 2019 budget as well.
Okay, so that review and recommendation or determination will be presented to the council during municipal budget discussions?
That is correct. It will be discussed during those standing committee meetings that review the various components of the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other council members? Okay, then with Bill 2397 here, that's on the floor for this, well, it's on the floor for discussion, we have no more comments here, so Ms. Foster, please call the roll for final passage.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Manten.
Yes.
Councilmember Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Boe.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Stein.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nannie.
Yes.
Okay, bill passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to new business, we have number one, Bill 2398 before the council for first reading and concerns Ward Six. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Motion made by Councilmember Boe, seconded by Councilmember Jordan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? All right, Ms. Foster, please read Bill 2398.
Bill 2398, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a city contractor agreement on behalf of the City of Wildwood with Kelp Contracting for the replacement of the Forby Road Box Culvert number 320 over Cliff Creek, Forby Creek, including traffic control and other incidental items as shown on the construction drawings and specifications.
Hey, Rick, do you have anything to add to the information that's already been shared?
I do not. Councilmember Garitano, but I'm available for any questions the council may have.
Do we have any questions? All right, then this bill will be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Bill number 2399 now is before the council for a first reading, concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Greg Nannie, seconded by Councilmember McGowan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? All right, Ms. Foster, please read Bill 2399.
Bill 2399, an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri enacting or otherwise amending certain components of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, such being specific to the land use appeal and protest procedures, along with improving citizen notifications efforts by enacting a new subsection to 415-500I, Appeal, Protest, or City Council Review of Planning Commission Decision, while also amending subsections of Section 415-500H, and I CUP 15-day review, subsections of Section 415-530, Appeal and Protest Procedure for Change of Zoning, and Special Procedures, and Subsections of Section 415-560, Procedure for Amending the Zoning Ordinance, all in accordance with the actions of the Ad Hoc Committee of City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission's Letter of Recommendation dated September 4th, 2018.
Hey, Jill, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council, a letter of recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission was presented to this body at a public hearing two weeks ago. At the conclusion of the hearing, the City Council authorized the preparation of this legislation. Departments available to respond to any questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay, we have Councilmember McCutcheon, and then Councilmember Greg Nannie. Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yeah, I don't really have a question. I'd just like to, I served on the ad hoc committee, and as a whole, I think the bill is excellent. My concern is the change by the Planning and Zoning Commission to limit notification to 1,500 feet, where the committee thought it was important to include more residents and get more input, and that was reason for the 3,000-feet notification.
Councilmember Greg Nannie.
Yeah, I got a question for you, Mr. Vunich. I sat in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting when this was discussed by them, but I've never really heard you comment. This is a very extensive outline of how this should be handled for various components, including having this council hold hearings in those cases. Does this work out well for you in terms of not causing you more trouble in getting these resolved?
No, sir. And I say that because the impetus for the changes came from a land use hearing involving Polty Homes and the Valley Road site, and it became clear as part of that process that there was repetition, and that repetition created confusion amongst the residents. So I actually think the changes, at least from the land use perspective, address that confusion.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Shay.
So I just want to be clear about your statement regarding Ms. McCutcheon about the 1,500 feet. You are confident that that will, or I'm not sure. Will you restate your, so I understand your position?
I was supportive of extending the notification mailings to 3,000 feet, just like it is at west of 109, and that was in order to include more public input and let them be notified more accurately on a wider basis of what the issues might be coming before This bill does not include the 3,000-feet notification to all residents.
Do we have any other council members? All right, with that then, this bill will be on the agenda for the next meeting. Moving on then to number three under this section here, Bill 2400, before the council for first reading and concerns Ward Three. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? All right, made by Councilmember Shay and seconded by Councilmember Dillard. Ms. Foster, oh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? All right, Ms. Foster, please read Bill 2400.
Bill 2400, an ordinance authorizing the approval of a fourth replacement deposit agreement for the Meridian subdivision, plat book 350, pages 174 through 178, a 30-lot division of a 99-acre tract of land as located in Section 23, Township 45 North, Range 3 East, City of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, being more specifically situated on the north side of Orville Road, east of State Route 109.
Jill, do you have anything to add, please?
Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council, the original plat and letters of credit in association with this project were approved in 2002. It is a 33-lot subdivision. The lots are generally three acres or greater in size, and the homes have ranged anywhere from a million to over $5 million. That in itself is part of the reason that the process has taken a while to complete, and the department does support the replacement deposit agreement, because it does indicate that the developer is still participating and will correct the deficiencies at the appropriate time.
Do we have any questions from the council? All right, then with that, this bill will be on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay, moving on to Bill 2401 before the council for first reading and concerns Ward Six. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Jordan, do we have a second? Councilmember Boe? All those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? All right, Ms. Foster, please read Bill 2401.
Bill 2401, an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri to execute an agreement with a property owner of 4522 Fox Creek Lane, Thomas Ilges trustee, for the purposes of placing a public utility pole on their respective lot that will provide for high-speed internet service to the surrounding neighborhood.
Jill, do you have anything to add?
Well, the title's a little misleading, and it wasn't intentional. The pole is in place and has been in place, and the department would respectfully request a second reading tonight, in that Mr. Ilges has his property up for sale.
Okay, do we have anyone who wishes to make a motion for a second reading? Made by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Councilmember Boe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? All right, then we will move forward with a second reading with this bill here. So any questions from the council members? All right, then we will move forward, and with the second reading of this bill, 2401 before the council for final passage and concerns Ward Six. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Oh, we got that right? Sorry. All right, so Ms. Foster, read Bill 2401.
Bill 2401, an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri to execute an agreement with a property owner of 4522 Fox Creek Lane, Thomas Ilges trustee, for the purposes of placing a public utility pole on their respective lot that will provide for high-speed internet service to the surrounding neighborhood.
All right, any other, and again, any questions during the second reading here? All right, Ms. Foster, please call the roll for final passage for Bill 2401.
Councilmember Manten.
Yes.
Councilmember Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Boe.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Stein.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nannie.
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, bill passes. all wards, is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Werther, is there a second? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, any abstain? All right, Ms. Foster, please read Bill 2402.
Bill 2402, an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri to execute an amended agreement with Burn Software Technologies for certain refinements to the planned city-specific software program, which will offer information and permit management solutions to uniquely address the diverse needs of Wildwood residents, businesses, and customers by enhancing team members' workflow and making publicly available information more accessible to all user groups.
Jill, do you have anything to add?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem and members of City Council, as you recall, near the end of 2017, the City Council approved, upon recommendation by the Department of Planning, a software system that will allow all permit processes to be done via the city's website. That process has been underway since the beginning of the year and headed by Mike Hartwig, the Assistant City Engineer, and Kathy Arnett, the Assistant Director of Planning and Parks. As that process unfolded, there have been challenges and opportunities, and they have led to requests for modifications to the original package of software. Those modifications have equated to an increase of approximately $8,900 to the original contract. These will be the last of the changes, and with these changes, the system will be ready for testing and implementation this fall. Therefore, the department is respectfully requesting the support of the City Council in this regard. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the council? So I have Councilmember Dodwell and McGowan.
Jill, do you need a second reading so that we can move this along?
I appreciate the offer, the system is still being refined, so I think two weeks is fine. Thank you very much, though.
Councilmember McGowan.
Jill, is this the software that was going to enable the city to interact directly with St. Louis County on various types of permits and that sort of thing?
St. Louis County and the Metropolitan St. Louis Sure District, both of those entities are on Acela, and that's part of the reason we had some change orders, trying to better integrate the three of us into a single system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you again.
All right, with that then, Bill 2402 will be on the agenda for the next meeting. All right, moving along then, we have no resolutions for tonight, so under miscellaneous, we have here two items, A, approval of expenditures, are there any questions? Councilmember Stevens, and then I have Gregg Nani.
Ryan, I was reading through these, like, does it list the expenses for the coffee with the mayor meetings in here?
It does not specifically call out that event, but if there are refreshments brought in to the event, that would be, I would have to, I can find it for you, but probably right, not at this moment, but I can direct that to you.
Okay, but there's a little bit of money spent.
Yeah, I guess it's about $40 or so each time.
What about expenses for the subdivision trustee meetings that the mayor's had?
That's not something the city's involved it with, so there's no cost to the city.
Okay, so, all right, is that, I guess this might be for Mr. Young, are those trustee meetings, are those like campaign events for the mayor, is that what it's considered, or just a private party, or a city event, or what?
I really don't know how they're scheduled, I'm not involved in them.
So, but you teach campaign financed, if I remember correctly, didn't you say that?
I give a brief introductory about what laws are out there, but I wouldn't say I teach it necessarily.
Oh, okay, I thought that you said that you gave speeches on that, or taught classes, or tutorials.
Campaign finance, no, no, I don't do classes on campaign finance.
Okay, like, if city money was being used for those trustee events, would those have to be open to the public, or can they still be like a private event?
It depends on how they're scheduled, but they could be technically private events, it just depends on how they're scheduled. If you're asking if they're a public open meeting under the Sunshine Law, if public funds were being spent, no, not necessarily.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Gregg Nani.
Yeah, I'm not sure who can answer this question, maybe it's nitpicking, but I found three charges for $100, $200 went to one person, and $100 went to another person as drivers for "Celebrate Wildwood." I'm assuming these are people who drove cars in the parade, is that correct?
May I, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem? Councilmember Gregg Nani, in the last two years, the dignitaries have been driven in the parade in cars that are rented, and some of those cars are luxury cars, so the dealership requires an employee of that dealership to drive, and we reimburse the cost of that driver.
Just want to make a comment, up until 2017, people were driven in cars that didn't cost us anything, but I'm just saying, thank you.
Understood, sir.
Councilmember McCutcheon, or? Okay, so great, so with the approval of the expenditures then, do we have a motion to approve of the expenditures? Made by Councilmember Manten, seconded by Councilmember McGowan, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, any abstain? All right, expenditures are approved. B, moving along, yes.
Could I make my move?
Oh, I was gonna do that one first and then, yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah, so we'll get to it right after this. So under receiving file, we have one item here, Jill, do you have any other comments you want to make under this?
No, sir, but if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, in that case then, we have Councilmember Taylor that wanted to speak.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Garitano, I want to thank you for, I, the motion I'm going to make is possible because you allowed me to present that amendment at the Admin and Public Works Meeting, and I think a lot of people would like to know that that meeting is in capable hands, run very well. I am very pleased with the amount of citizen interaction there, I think you do a wonderful job, I've never seen so many unanimous votes. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, you seem to be magic here, so maybe the mayor should be cautious and not take so many vacations. But, and I didn't mean, no, 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 I didn't mean that, I did not mean that snidely, but it's just, you're doing a good job. And as you know, I made some introductory remarks, I made some remarks under public participation, I'm not going to rehash all of that, but originally, I was not allowed to have anything on miscellaneous, I was disappointed with that, but I appreciate you allowing me to make this motion, so I'm just going to make it. I make the motion to repair the legislation passed by the Administration and Public Works Committee, R 924, amending the rules for public procedure.
Yeah.
Right, R 911, amending the rules for public procedure for first reading and to place it on the City Council's 10-8 agenda for first reading.
All right, so we have a motion made by Councilmember Taylor and seconded by Councilmember Jordan. Any questions or comments from the council? We have Councilmember Gregg Nani.
Yes, I agree with this motion wholeheartedly, and let me remind everybody that if you go back to May of this year, we already made a motion and we passed that motion to change the rules of public participation, and then got into a tussle with arguments over whether or not I changed my motion, which by the way, I did not, but anyway, it went to the committee. The committee has heard this, the committee has said that this needs to be taken care of, and I believe that it needs to be taken care of. And I would encourage all of you to think very hard about voting against this, this is not a bill that you want to vote against. It really entails the folks out here, it's not for us, it's for them, and so it's the best I can tell you. Thank you.
Councilmember Werther.
Thank you, and then Councilmember Shay also had her hand up. Just a quick comment, this is, it's unfortunate we've had to come to this particular place as a council body, as a city. Up until April of 2016, didn't matter who the mayor was, didn't matter who the council was, we had the ability and respected the ability to have a conversation, to answer a question, to find out, maybe we don't know something right now, but we'll get back to you on it. And for everyone to hear that that's gathered here, now it's even a broader audience with the live stream. I look forward to the opportunity to return to those days, so thank you very much, Ms. Councilmember Taylor.
Councilmember Shay.
Okay, just as kind of a refined point here, we heard from speakers, and we heard from Mr. Taylor regarding this, and I just want to make this distinction that everyone's allowed to speak, obviously, at public participation, you have limited time, it's fair, but it's not your ability to ask a question, it's your ability to get a response, not even an answer, because as some have pointed out, we don't always know the answer. And I think that any interpretation that this is an open door to, you know, a debate scenario, it's not it at all. And in fact, I've been at the podium and asked questions and referred to staff. Sorry, we don't know that, but we'll get back with you. And the benefit of that is that you are recognized as an integral part of this proceeding, and it's not just a blank stare, okay, because there's nothing less fulfilling than to try to participate in your meeting and then just have your comments fall dead. And I think it's really sort of, as Ms. Morton pointed out, it's about human reaction, and we are not, we're not here just to be fixtures, we're here to respond and to accommodate public inquiry. And so I just want to make that distinction, that we're not here to answer every question unilaterally, it's about opportunity to get a response and have that kind of healthy engagement that a community should be open to, and we ought not to be afraid of that, so I support this, thank you.
Councilmember McCutcheon. Next item, Councilmember Stein, did you have something related to the motion that's on the floor here?
Yeah, so, just as the Mayor Pro Tem already recognized me, I want to make sure that everybody's clear that regardless if we're using the current language or the proposed language that Councilman Taylor is bringing forward, we will still have to be recognized by the mayor, the mayor or the facilitator of the meeting, that's the way it was with Mayor Werther. Now, he pretty much, I think the policy was, if a council member felt like they needed to respond, or they liked to respond, unless we were pressed for time, or we had beaten a question to death, we were given the ability to respond. I do think that's a good practice, and so I just want everybody to have their eyes open that we are not here bringing forward legislation that is going to force the mayor behave in a certain way. So as long as that's understood, I support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Garitano for allowing the responses this evening, and for Ms. Dodwell and Mr. Bertolino for giving responses and for leading the way on this issue. I do approve of this motion, thank you.
So with that, we have a motion on the floor for, again, we want to make sure it's clear, that is for the October 8th meeting?
Yes, October 8th meeting, prepare the legislation that was passed, R 911, by the Admin and Public Works Committee, amending the rules for public procedure, to prepare that for first reading and to have it placed on the City Council's 10-8 agenda.
Okay, did you want to include, or is work session as part of that too?
If the mayor decides that he would also like to have a work session, but my motion is for the first reading.
Okay, so everyone understand that then? All right, then.
Clarification.
Sure.
That will appear on the regular agenda.
Yes.
Yes, that's my understanding motion to make.
Don't want it to be a question.
And we can have Ms. Foster recite it if you want to, we want to make sure we get that clarity here. Do you want?
I've recorded.
Okay, we have regular city council agenda. Okay, then, all right, roll call vote?
Councilmember Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Boe.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Stein.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani.
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Manten.
Yes.
All right, then that motion passes. All right, we have, I have Councilmember McCutcheon waiting, and then I'll give it to you, Councilmember Gregg Nani.
I just want to take a minute to clear up some misstated information during public participation. I am not in charge of internet responses. I made the suggestion that responses to questions from public participation be posted on the internet so that all residents had an equal opportunity to read those responses and to obtain information.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gregg Nani.
Yes, I would like to first thank my colleagues up here tonight for a wonderful meeting and for voting in favor of this last measure, and I'd like to thank you, Mr. Garitano, you've been great tonight, and despite the fact, despite the fact that you're not wearing a bow tie, you did a great job.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Dr. Gregg Nani. Okay, and I just want to make one final comment, I want to thank everyone too here for the productive meeting here, and thanks for working together on this. All right, so we have a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Werther, do we have a second? Councilmember Manten, all those in favor, say aye.